Actually to add 410-240, which we labeled duty equipment. Uh, this would pay for the purchase of tasers with the total cost being around twenty-five thousand dollars, you know, but at a rate of five thousand dollars per year. So it's a sixty-month plan if the board so choose so to want to outfit the department with new tapes that you do.
How old are ours?
Old. So they are no longer, um, being serviced by Axon anymore.
Okay.
Um, now there are still some parts, there are still some, uh, batteries that we can get for it, but they're no longer supporting that.
Okay.
End of life.
End of life, yeah.
End of life.
Are these on?
It'll be resolution, uh, two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Are these on coast dust or some other similar, um, pre-bid?
We just went straight to, uh, the manufacturer itself.
Because, because it's above the, above the, um, competitive bidding limits in the second phase of the code, uh, twenty-three thousand two hundred.
Twenty-two. I can see if they're on coast dust. That I'm not sure. What was your overall bid initially? It wasn't twenty-five. We, we had some in there as a, as a cover.
But we, we could still move forward with the resolution.
You can move forward with the resolution, but you might not be able to purchase if it's above the competitive bidding limit and not on a program such as coast dust. Coast dust isn't the only program. There may be a similar pre-bid program with police equipment.
Okay, it's twenty-three thousand one hundred and ninety. Twenty-two thousand one ninety, so it falls within that.
So it would fall within that.
Yeah, it would fall within twenty-two two.
So we don't have to worry about that?
I'm sure they, okay, yeah, I'm sure they were.
All right.
Yeah.
Twenty-two one maybe. No, twenty-seven.
No, twenty-seven. Don't get me confused. Wait a minute.
All right, then, maybe we'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we...
And again, it's, we're only, we're only paying.
I just wanted to make sure.
For here. We're not shoving out the whole twenty-two thousand.
Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-seven, we're making line four-ten point-two-four-zero duty equipment, and this would pay for the purchase of the tasers with a total cost of twenty-three-one-ninety.
Point-two-one-nine.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, sorry, I'm near that part. Twenty-two-one-ninety over.
Twenty-three.
Yeah, I have a twenty-three.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. I will take it. We have a second roll call, Miss Brynstein.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Bittler.
I'll go yes to the extent I understand the motion.
Another yes.
Thank you, Board. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Rimby. Uh, finance.
Okay, so in your package you will find an updated, uh, monthly expenses, which we just completed this afternoon. Uh, that is to update you through today and the questions that we had. So I'm sure you're aware of that. Uh, the Treasury report, sewer agent report, uh, as available and up-to-date through the workshop per your approval.
We have a question on that. We have a motion to approve the monthly expenses and the Treasury report, sewer agent report. You know, possession.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second roll call. Miss Brynstein.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Bittler.
Although no.
And all of us. That's it for finance.
Okay. Jeff?
Andrew Howlett.
Yeah.
Uh, you include the sewer agent reports?
Sewer agent reports in there.
Okay. Uh, Joe, weren't you guys supposed to have a discussion tonight about, uh, person on that sewer agent report?
Excuse me?
You were supposed to have a discussion regarding leaning somebody on that sewer agent report that's pending.
Um, the, the lean that would be, let me see on the sewer agent reporter.
So property of a civilian drive?
Right, yes. Um, I guess we'll... Fix the, the nine-one-nine-two-one church LLC property and the, uh, sewer, the amount, uh, due for sewer is nine-hundred forty-six dollars with, uh, seven-hundred and four dollars as, with seven-hundred and four dollars more than one-hundred and twenty days past due. And the question, uh, the question was raised at the authority meeting last night, uh, whether you, uh, believe that this property should be leaned.
So one-on-one civilian drive is, uh, the property does not have a, a home currently on it. I believe it was a mobile home at one point in time.
No.
That was not, well, it, it...
It was Alstair.
It was Alstair. And, uh, there was a, there was one EDU assigned to it. Uh, it has been there since. So to... How, how to explain this? So at this point in time, the decision is whether we not, we want to lean this property because it still has the EDU attached to it. We could also eliminate the EDU, but then the property would essentially be, how do we want to explain this a little bit more, essentially drop in value because...
I don't think we can eliminate EDU.
Okay.
We have a process in place for these leans. I don't understand why this is difficult. If it's more than the amount, lean.
Right.
It's simple. It's really simple.
And, and if the, if the board authorizes it, we will do so.
The board has already authorized it, Joe.
Well, it was, it was discussed last night. It was asked, we brought it into the board.
It's not necessarily an authority agenda. This, this board sets that policy. We've already set the policy. I, I don't understand why the discussion is simple.
I have, I have no issue with leaning the property because it was connected to the sewer system and there's an amount past due. So I have, I have no problem with doing so. Uh, we simply are seeking your advice in doing so because it's an unusual and extenuating circumstance.
Well, the fact remains that there's nothing on it.
It was approved before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that's part of the problem. There's nothing on it.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the problem.
Right, so if you consider it approved before...
From my perspective, selling or buying it, that's part of it. It's, it's just a vacant piece of land. What you're telling me is there was a house fire, right? Okay? So the house fire means there's not a structure there currently, correct? Okay, so there is an EDU to have, but there's nothing there.
Right, right. But there is a value that had, that comes from having the EDU, and that's why it's example of property, even if there's no usage, if there is an EDU active.
Right.
The property is subject to minimum charge. And if you want to set the same policy and have the same policy, that's fine. Seeking your, seeking advice on doing so, and if the preference is to lean the property, no more needs to be set.
I'm only asking because this is a different circumstance than a normal one.
It is a different circumstance, and that's why the authority asked that it be discussed.
If the authority is asking us to discuss our lean policy generally speaking, put it on the agenda. We can do that next month. In the meantime, this is, this is the policy, and there's no motion needed. Just lean.
That's, because that's not what they're asking. They're asking because it's a unique circumstance.
That, that wasn't our question. Our question was why it wasn't being leaned and that note was attached to it. Say that again, Mr. Steve. Our question wasn't why, was why it's not being leaned. There's a note attached next to that, that address.
That it was being discussed, that it was under discussion.
Right, it was be, being discussed. So, you know, as far as we're concerned, it gets, it's leaned. I personally have a property that has absolutely nothing on it, and I pay a sewer bill every quarter.
And that secures your EDU.
Because I have the EDU. If I don't want the EDU, I quit paying the hundred and ten dollars.
Okay, well, I don't have sewer issues, so that's why I'm asking.
Well, this, this guy here is in the same hub. If he wants the EDU, he's got to pay.
Well, yeah, and if he doesn't, he should have canceled it.
Well, he could turn it in and pay the five thousand dollars when he wants it back.
I said move forward with lean.
Yeah, okay, well, well, I just wanted to understand what it was, that the problem was, because wasn't normal, so...
This is out of the ordinary, but, you know, we've gotten the advice of the board and we'll move forward with leaning the property.
No, I want to...
Yeah, I, I've been advised after our legal to start believing today, so, yeah.
So the lean was already a property, that's all we're impressed with.
All right, that's it for finance. Uh, Rich?
Manager Howlett. Okay, RFPs, uh, we, we did actually pass out RFPs that have been developed in our office, uh, with the exception of the one for the solicitor, which is already pre-existing for your review. Uh, we are going to, as per our workshop discussion, going to need at least one for the auditor, uh, and I'm seeking the board's guidance on how they would like to proceed with these. Now, it was also suggested, uh, actually at the RTMA meeting last night, there's pen bid, uh, which, if I understand that system correctly, we can put bids out on that. Uh, they would then essentially send their RFP. You know, we put an RFP out, they would send it back, and they actually pay for the process of doing so. We're not actually paying. That was the one question I did have of them, uh, to advertise those, but we could do that as well.
It's not going to hurt anything to advertise them, is it?
No, uh, as I mentioned previously, I believe the October twenty-ninth meeting, uh, we had talked about, you know, maybe doing that process now. Uh, I would recommend on an annual basis, we look to do that in the spring.
Yeah.
Uh, that then gives us the opportunity to review them in June-July timeframe, uh, and at that point in time, then they can be part of budget discussions as we enter, you know, September, October, November.
Yeah, we discussed that about changing everything to be getting all our RFPs in the spring instead.
I think that would be, so, so would the board like me to proceed with, yes or no?
Uh, in, in case I'd like the auditor, you should probably go for a couple of years at a time, because I'm, I'll tell you something, auditor is a hard to find. Uh, uh, you know, you search, you search, and if you get somebody, you're lucky if they get it done on time. I really must give you up some other process for the municipalities and the sewer authorities to use, other than this.
Is there a recommendation? I would suggest maybe two or three years for the auditor. Uh, if we advertise that way, that gives you some continuity across the board.
Yeah, I was going to say, go for three and have them all doing it every so often.
So I understand. Do we need a motion then, uh, since someone to approve me to advertise those on pen bid?
Yes, just in terms of this.
All right, we need a motion. We have a motion to approve, Manager Howlett, to advertise the RFP.
Are, are we good with the RFPs?
Jeff, with the auditor?
Yes.
I, I, I looked at them, but I... Do you have questions?
We're, we're all good with them? Well, the last time that we did it, particularly as it relates to our solicitor, that system was hijacked. And that is all, and that is all, well, what are we going to do to prevent that from happening again? That's my question.
We're not going to sit there and base it everything, Mr. Bittler, like you want to.
What does hijack mean?
Hijack means that there were applicants that applied that were, were never given the information. Hijack means that there were, there were, in my opinion, inappropriate discussions occurring.
Oh, okay, we're, we're going away from that.
And not acknowledging, if you read our solicitor's material that the firm responded with, that it wasn't applicable.
Is she now our solicitor? Yes. Could you please move forward and address the situation?
That's right, and I've objected to that, and I continue to object to that. So, so I think we should advertise, but I, I, I think we should make sure we get a system in place that's not going to be, as I say, hijacked.
I mean, emotion. Could someone decide to either, can I move forward?
I have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Sure.
So that was advertised all, was an auditor for three years. Yep. Greg, you got a second?
I second, yes.
There's a question up there. All right, we have a second. Hey, your three months, minutes is almost up.
Like, hold it all and bring it.
I'm just saying, uh, if we use, if you use a pen bid, there's no cost. Also, do you need a motion?
Yeah, you do need a motion to take an action such as advertise.
So...
So are we using pen bid or are we using our own?
It doesn't really matter. He could do more than one. It's not going to hurt if he goes multiple places. You get more people, remember?
So what's the motion then? To do both pen bid and our own or not? The motion was just to advertise, whether that's pen bid.
That's right, to advertise. We didn't, we didn't put him in a hole and say, you must use this. We said it's free. Take advantage of whatever free opportunities we have to secure auditors for the next three years.
What I, my message asks, what I can do is brief the board throughout to let them know how the process is going with each of these bids. If there's some that we cannot in some way make on pen bid, then we could always come back to board and let you know.
Why don't you advertise, and that seems like the motion, and then whatever you get on pen bid is a bonus.
That's why I asked him to advertise on both fleets.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call, Miss Brynstein.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Bittler.
Yes.
And all of us.
Okay, also in your, uh, in your pack, seeing as a draft calendar, and the one thing that we had had in draft calendar, I believe for the workshop, or up through the workshop, uh, was the additional dates and end word, actually, times, uh, for your budget meetings in September, October, November. We have removed those, uh, just based on the idea that I, I think that's something you wanted to discuss on down the line, so we can always re-advertise those as we get closer to that. What I'd like to do is, in our files, make a mark in the June-July timeframe to get those on the calendar. That puts us a little bit more ahead, uh, than we've been in the past. Uh, with regard to January of this upcoming year, I do want to note, one thirteen, we are recommending that the planning commission reorg, because the board of supervisors reorg is on the first Monday following the holiday, that would be the sixth, that we move the planning commission reorganization meeting until the thirteenth. I'd also like to note on here, January of two thousand twenty-six, we have listed all of the dates for reorganization meetings, and most specifically, the one that's most important is the one-five-twenty-six, that's the board of supervisors reorganization meeting. As I have mentioned previously, for January of two thousand twenty-six, that's one you want to have on this calendar, so that as a new board sits, if they would like to make changes to the calendar, you can produce those, and then that's advertising in two thousand twenty-seven, the first month. All right, any questions on, on that?
Anybody have any questions about the calendar and the process?
No.
No.
No. Okay, you looking for approval?
Yes, and that we can prove an advertise at this point, that we need to advertise.
Yeah, I think a motion, we can prove to advertise, absolutely.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? All right, we have a second. Mr. Gallow, uh, roll call, Miss Brynstein.
Yes, please.
Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Bittler.
Yes.
And all of us.
Okay. The, uh, next item on here is a discussion of what would be resolution two thousand twenty-four dash twenty-eight. What we had talked about at our workshop meeting was adding line four-three-eight dot one hundred and the amount of twenty thousand dollars for sewer maintenance performed by the township. Upon review of the budgets that we have and the funds that we have, we have what is known as a sewer fund. I think there is often some confusion that that sewer fund is tied to our general operating fund. It is not. That sewer fund is the user fees that come in, and I would recommend that that is where we should pool the maintenance for the township. So if, if we perform maintenance as a township, we would charge that fund for the maintenance of the lines.
Keeps things clear, cleaner.
Correct. The RTMA, then, we do do an annual transfer of a hundred thousand to the RTMA. That annual transfer a hundred thousand is for the operation of the plant as well as the two pump stations. So my recommendation would be that we don't need to add this particular line. I have not added into the confidential budget. We did add the line for ten dash, you know, point-two-four-zero, just for the purposes of this evening. However, I would not recommend we add this particular line.
When you say confidential budget, what do you mean by that?
At this point in time, the budget has not been advertised.
It doesn't mean it's not, it's confidential. I asked before to be put on the website. This is something we've had three or four public meetings, and you don't understand the basic issue of confidentiality. There's nothing confidential about, as we discuss the budget. Nothing.
The, the, there's a budget that, there's a preliminary budget that is advertised. The budget is developed in a public meeting, and anything that would be in the meeting packet can be the subject of a right-to-know request. Uh, under the right-to-know law, though, and I can't cite a chapter and verse, the, uh, strategy to develop a draft budget is, is, uh, an exempt document, uh, under right-to-know. So there are confi, there are documents which may be confidential, but budget discussions are in the public meeting and, and open.
I can assure, you know, our voting tax-paying residents that there does not seem to be any strategy at all, particularly lacking a, a fair amount of rhyme or reason. We've discussed these, these items, and they're here. There, there's no reason to continue this trade.
Once the budget is adopted, that's when it gets put out there.
Well, that's a heck of a time for the public to learn about things.
The public was not here. They chose to come or not come, Mr. Bittler. You have it on there. They can sit and watch from home. How many people have shown up here to question you on the budget?
You've shown up one time late out of four budget meetings. Is that correct, Miss Brynstein? You've shown up one time.
What Chris?
All right.
We can't hear.
I think this is...
Mr. Bittler, I'm going to...
It's not a matter, Mr. Chairman, of doing something later. It's doing it right the first time. We then have, we then have a nonsensical budget, again.
Mr. Bittler, uh, I'm just going to read to you section seven oh eight B.
Why don't you just email me it tomorrow?
No, why doesn't she read it?
I don't need it read right now.
Yeah, she does. It'll be the strategy, the record reflects...
So, so you're doing what I don't need to be done.
But we want to hear it now that it's...
Well, I'm asking for, am I asking for that?
But I am. How's that?
It doesn't matter what I'm asking for. Is that what you're saying?
I'm reading it to the board.
We matter, we will.
I might be hearing it. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay, a record reflecting the strategy used to develop or achieve the successful adoption of the budget legislative proposal and regulation is exempt. That's not saying that the, the budget is advertised as a public document. Anything that is within the meeting packet that is with the firm and the board is a public document.
Mr. Mr. Manager, what documents haven't been in the public, what, what documents hasn't been in the public meeting that could be construed as, as our counselor's saying? Anyone? Okay.
All you want to do is pick people apart, Mr. Bittler. I wish we would be as perfect as you.
All right, um...
I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty-two-four dash twenty-eight.
I would say we don't, don't need it because we charged the sewer fund for any line maintenance.
Chris, it's hard to hear when you're on the phone.
Yeah, Chris, he, he's saying that we don't need that right now.
Oh, okay.
I know it's hard when I was, I was out of town and I couldn't hear you.
So, well, I mean, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
It's just motion for, this is for this. He says we don't need it, but Chris made a motion, so...
Because he can't hear that well with his phone. We need to look at Zoom for when there's a problem with this.
All right, so we have a motion, no second?
No, but, um...
And the, uh, the final item I have on here for this evening is the request of board a motion to, um, advertise our budget this evening. Any questions you may have?
How, how did we get a non-physician for a police administrative assistant between drafts two and three of the budget? We said we were going to discuss this. When would we discuss this, Scott?
You discussed it earlier.
Me?
More than once.
Why me? Why am I getting picked?
Because you said we were going to discuss. I'm not picking on you, I'm saying, responding to...
You should discuss.
Okay, when do we want to do that? Before or after we advertise the budget? And my question to our manager is, how? How did a, a line item that's new, that hasn't been here for the last umpteen years, how does it magically appear on there? Who, who asked you?
Yes, we discussed this, Chris.
That line item was already in place, Mr. Bittler, so that's the one that was placed there.
Did you hear Chris?
Yeah. Yes.
That, that line, that...
That line item had zero through the first two or three drafts, and magically something appeared.
Yes.
How did that appear? Who asked you to put that out?
Sir, as part of our process, I met with each of our departments, our crew leader, and also with our acting chief to discuss what we felt would be appropriate in the budget, which we had presented to you this evening.
This was, this was all done, Brett Chris. Wasn't, didn't this discussion take place?
It was discussed. I mean, Rich has brought up some of these positions for quite some time.
Months.
It was in all the other copies.
Yeah. No, agreed.
It was that sixty-three-four, four-ten-one-seven.
Exactly.
Four-ten-one-seven there. It's a missing, what date is that?
That's correct. You are one hundred percent correct. Once we discussed it, they were in the budget all this time. In case we did hire them, it would, we had the money in the budget to do it.
The budget is closing?
So, get over it.
The budget is inaccurate?
Okay.
Stop.
All right, so it was there. It was there. We didn't, we, it wasn't...
Yeah, there's no problem.
So...
It wasn't magically discussed, did it?
Yes, it was. Multiple times.
It was discussed, it wasn't magically.
Go ahead, Jeff.
All right, so we have, um, a request to approve and advertise the budget?
Well, it's actually just to be advertised. The only point we had.
Right, it's to be advertised first.
So advertise, advertise the budget.
It's advertised to be open for review, comment, and inspection.
Okay, so we need a motion to advertise the budget to be open for discussion.
An inspection.
An inspection.
I'll make that motion with the corrections we made tonight with my request for the line item before ten. So any corrections were made tonight, so I'll make that motion with the added corrections.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
You do.
Miss Brynstein's second. All right, roll call. Miss Brynstein.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Bittler.
Although no.
And all of us.
Thank you, Board.
All right, uh, fire companies. Friendship Fire Company.
Uh, you have our report, and so we have...
Okay. Uh, I mean, there's no representative.
We do.
Um, Galen, do you, do you have a report? You were reporting anything for Gibraltar?
No.
On their line item? Okay. All right, minutes, expenses, and reports.
Those are included in your packet.
Any questions around the minutes, expenses, or reports? All right, do we have a motion to approve the minutes, expenses, and reports in our possession?
Yes, make that motion.
Do we make a motion? All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Roll call, Miss Brynstein.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Bittler, although no. And all of us. All right, um... Engineer Roe.
Good evening, Board. Um, for your meeting tonight, we had a couple rollover, rollover items from my agenda, uh, at the workshop. The first one is with respect to a plan before your planning commission, Old Hickory Buildings. Uh, I do believe there's a representative here from Greg's office to discuss that with you. Uh, this discussion, uh, is with respect to the proposal for on-lot septic service for two non-residential buildings. Um, and to refresh your memory, this site is on Route Ten, uh, opposite of Penske Building, percent. So, floor is yours.
Is it okay I just put it here?
It is, yeah.
So this is a fifteen, uh, almost twenty-acre lot. We are subdividing into two lots for this one, and we are requesting, uh, we, uh, we are requesting for on-lot sewer on this one because we do not have any public lines on Route Ten that we can co, connect our sewer lines to. So we have been requesting for that, and, uh, I know Greg has been here going over the meetings, uh, with the workshop meeting and with the township authority regarding, and, uh, regarding this issue, and, uh, I'm just here to get a note. I do have some documents where you can see and prove, um, here's one.
Thank you very much.
So on the first one, you can see our, uh, our site line, and there's a aerial showing the lines, uh, of Penske. Penske has a four-inch lane, uh, but they don't have enough capacity to actually connect our sewer to their property, and there wasn't, like, we tried to reach out to them, and they did not agree to it because of the capacity that they have. So we are left with options on doing our, our lot sewer, our, our septic, uh, system.
So I don't know what the testing settled on as far as what type of septic it will[1693.34] be. The perks and probes were witnessed and approved by our Township SEO, Clint Haller. The project itself is still somewhat in the early stages with the planning commission. I believe it'll be back to you for a preliminary plan dependent on preliminary plan approval, depending on how this discussion goes. But this is a section in our zoning ordinance that basically requires non-residential projects to be serviced by public water and public sewer. There is a Section 702 E3 in the zoning ordinance that allows on-lot or private utility service with the approval of the Board of Supervisors. So, this is not a plan approval at this time. This is the approval of the concept of an on-lot sewer service for these two buildings. And by way of reference, Old Hickory Buildings, as was presented to the planning commission, they build sheds, and the sister company, what's, what's?
It's called Metal Max. They actually take orders of your metal for, for the requirements that the companies have, and they just cut it, and they don't manufacture in here, they cut and they sell it out. So, these are the two properties that we have, and there wasn't any plans to have anything else over there.
There is an agreement, an intermunicipal agreement going back to the late eighties and early nineties with amendments in nineteen ninety and nineteen ninety-two for what's called the Phase Two area of the Green Hills Management Company Development. And it allows Green Hills Management to construct or extend a sewer on Phase Two to connect to the Poomer system, does not require it, and it would require to connect to the Robinson system if the Robinson system were extended there, but that is not the case here. So, basically, all we're doing is saying that they have approval to move forward to figure out what kind of system they can put on the lot.
And proceed with the concept of an on-lot septic system.
And the final plans will have all of those.
Right.
Correct.
Same will, yes.
And then again, this is a zoning item, one that needs to be vetted before the plan kind of continues to.
Yeah, we haven't designed a system yet because we were waiting for your word, and once we get the word, then we can start designing it, and then we will go through the process to get approved, and then we will show the final plans from the state.
And then the section of the zoning ordinance to which Mr. Rhodes referred was Section 702 E3 that was added in 2021, which gives the Board of Supervisors the discretion as opposed to having the seven-year warranty.
So, what's our alternative if we don't proceed with that? What's, what's our alternative as a board if we don't grant this? They're out of luck?
Well, pretty much, so. I'd say we need to be. Right, they would have to, right, they would have to seek a variance from Section 709 B2. Is there really a reason to want to deny it? Is there any reason not to move forward with this?
You're asking me?
I'm asking in general. Anybody have a reason we can't move forward with this?
Well, I mean, I think this establishes a precedent. We have a sewer system that's apparently going to be expanding. It's something that I don't recall seeing a lot of it before the workshop, who I mentioned, and, you know, here we are three days later.
Yeah, but this is, this is one of two projects, I will tell the board, that's currently in your pipeline, so to speak, with this, a similar request. In this case, this, this site has standing public water service to it, does not have public service.
So, what happens if public sewer becomes available later and they have a system?
Well, unless it fails, why should they have to, God?
Yeah, it's, it's a mandate, anything at a hundred fifty feet. If, if the sewer, if the public sewer system is extended in front of their property, they could be mandated to connect.
Right, and that, that's, that's under the second-class township code, NMA, that could be required.
It's good to know I can let the clients know about it, that way they're aware and they can make their plans and detail it ahead of time.
We've granted several of these.
Yeah.
All the properties out along Chestnut Hill, where, where the industrial park was, we've granted one of these for every one of those because there's no public sewer or available.
There's none planned, there's none planned for out there, but is there a remote plan for this one or not?
Yeah, it's, it's a long-term pipeline.
Isn't, isn't that the matter?
We're not going up this far.
Harold, haven't we done this before? This isn't a new concept.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to grant the time extension to allow the explore that.
Thank you.
So, the time extension and the time extension.
Yeah.
Exploration, come back with older plans.
Right, and the waiver under 702 E3. Yes, I second that.
And the waiver under 702 E3. All right, we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
I seconded it.
We have a second. Roll call, Ms. Breinsteine.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bevler?
Yes.
And all of them.
Thank you.
The second item that I have for you this evening, this was discussed briefly at the workshop as well. We have been working with the developer and the management corporation for River Rock Meadows. They have requests in for release of their maintenance funds with both the township and RTMA. We have coordinated with RTMA, and at this point, I believe, we are prepared to recommend to the board to release those maintenance funds, which total two hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Were they delinquent on certain items for a substantial period of time or not?
I'm gonna say that the, their request to release this money certainly caught their attention when we pointed out that there were several items that needed to be addressed.
And that have been?
They have been addressed, yes.
So, so what's our mechanism to make them address that more time-wise?
Well, it would have to be through the zoning ordinance or actions like that. We can't maintain their construction escrow in perpetuity.
Well, we, we have the option to do those improvements ourselves, correct, or?
You would have the right to step in and do them if they fail to do it.
Using that, using their money, using?
Yeah, but we'd be using our money, you know, at the township's time.
We've been for the money.
But.
Okay, so you say it's in order?
It's currently in order.
I'll make that motion that we release the escrow funds, the amount two eighty-two, one ninety-one seventeen, as the River Rock Meadows.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
We have a second. Roll call, Ms. Breinsteine.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bevler?
Yes.
And all of them, yes.
Thank you, Board. That's all I have for you this evening, unless you have questions in the report that I previously circled.
Any questions?
No.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Rhodes.
Just curious, if we can get enough feed on the Rock Hollow Road Bridge.
So, Rock Hollow Road Bridge, the bidding specs are prepared. We discussed with Mr. Whitman advertising dates. I anticipate having bids back to this board before the end of year.
Okay.
As soon as those.
Two years out.
As soon as those advertisements are prepared to run, I will let you know.
Thank you, Ryan.
Okay. Ms. London?
My items are covered elsewhere in the agenda.
Okay. All right, Mr. Reddinger?
I have nothing. It's real quick, we winterized both the park and the concession stand today, so water's off, everything's flushed out, should be good to go.
Thank you.
What was the condition of that concession stand?
Honestly, I was not in it.
Just you were only in the bathrooms?
I'm sorry?
You were only in the bathroom?
I was not in it. It was two, two other, two guys. I can ask them tomorrow.
Might want to check that out, just to make sure we spent some capital kind of proving that, rehabilitating that.
Okay.
Anything for Park and Rack?
Nothing for Park and Rack and, and, and were the EAC, which EAC covered the workshop.
All right, new business. Okay, I believe this is where you were. Galen?
I'd like to appoint Brody Whitman as a deputy emergency management coordinator, and I'd like to have the board confirm that tonight and get it in the minutes so that we've got documentation that he is an official appointee of the township.
I'll make that motion. Is that simple?
Yep.
What's, what's this? It's just like email or text message?
I don't know, I just seconded it, so I, uh.
I think it's just a backup documentation that was sent to me by, by Galen.
Yeah.
Just add it into the packet just for your. I tried to forward it to everybody, I don't know if you got it or not, but I, I did try to.
Okay, so we have a motion to appoint, to approve the appointing of Brody Whitman as a deputy emergency management coordinator.
I seconded it already.
And we have a second? Okay, we have a second. Roll call, Ms. Breinsteine.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bevler?
Yes.
And all of them, yes.
Thank you. I just want to say I've known Brody for a long time, I think he did a fine job. Second item on there is, is also related to emergency management. The, it's coming through FEMA, but it's actually coming from FEMA, from the federal emergency management thing. They're changing the way that we have to do damage assessments. If we have a flood or something like that, right now, there are papers that we go out and fill out, and they're submitted to the, to the county, the county takes them, and then submits them to the state, and the state submits them to FEMA. FEMA is, if you've ever been watching too many TV shows, they want to see things right away. So, if we're there and we're taking pictures, they want those pictures submitted directly to FEMA. If they've got that, they've got the report, and they can come back and, and look at what's happening instantaneously. To do that, it requires someone to have some type of computer operation to do that, either a laptop that can be connected to the cloud, a tablet. I'm not the person to be selecting the equipment. Jeff, Joy, you'd both know far, far, far more than I would. But it does not have to be a really sophisticated piece of equipment. I checked with the county, and they said it is possible to run it even on a cell phone. But, or, you know, just taking pictures and doing things, or typing out a little bigger screen's a lot easier to work with, and that's why I was looking for a bigger device. It would not be mine, it's Township's equipment, and if I'm no longer here, the next person's gonna need it anyhow because it's gonna be, gonna be required. So, I'm asking you to put the budget to appropriate something.
Oh, you're looking at a thousand bucks, are we, Jeff?
I mean, depending on what device you go with.
Right, but I mean.
I would go with a laptop.
Yeah, my, maybe can do some sort of tablet with a rugged case.
But then it's gotta be a tablet where you can send and receive your emails, your foreword stuff, or upload it.
Take pictures also.
You can, yeah.
Well, the quality would be better, usually with the cameras that you got uploading.
We can, we can research. I think we should just research something and see what we're up against.
Well, I was just saying, even putting it in the budget, we're not talking about a large expenditure.
No.
You know, look, they're large. So, well, I wanted you to have it, that you had another authorization.
Wanted it to be clear that people understood we weren't spending a ton of money to do this, but it's gonna help everybody to do their job more efficiently.
Yeah, we had a tablet here, the tablet here. I, we were having to it, but we had one. I don't know whether it's the high enough quality that, you know, would be needed today, you know what I mean? If you're upgrading everything, so.
If it's three or four.
Probably, probably, we'll have to see what it's gonna fit the building on, spend any.
We'll take a look and see what we have. Yeah, it's, it's one of the, we talked about the logistics pieces. So, I'll take a look and see what we have.
The tablet is not gonna be broken. And if they can't get signal, it's not gonna help.
We'll get some quotes and shit around there.
Can't work that out when they're out there with it.
But I actually think it was a great idea because we've been out there, we've spent four days out there doing damage assessments.
Four hours, maybe.
And, and we've spent, and we got nothing.
Really?
Yeah, we died at the county, and that was it. Uh, there, as far as I know, there's still a mitigation, uh, of application for Mount Grove.
There's four applications in for, for hazardous mitigation, and that's the next topic I have, if the board has a moment. I had gone previously, two meetings at Hurst, one with the emergency management through the Tash, Emergency Management Association, FEMA, we've got FEMA, FEMA and FEMA, so it is kind of confusing. But I had attended an excellent session there, and when I came back, the former manager, I gave him a lot of the information that I have. But I do have for Rich tonight, I got digging through what I had, and I have the names of the people that did the presentation. So, I'll turn those over to you tonight. We have those, we're, we're now, got all four of those things on the county's list. The county updated their list, that was all done. All four places are now on there. That stays there, we don't need to update that year to year. But applications from FEMA have to be placed each year. Now, I don't know if there's form work or paperwork we have to have. I have a call in due with the county to see if there is, see what the next step is, but they have not gotten back to me on that. But I'm trying to push it along a little bit, and I'm gonna hopefully be in touch with Rich, if that's all right with the board. You know, and I'll just keep forwarding whatever I can. Hopefully, we can get the application and maybe qualify for some hazard mitigation money.
Okay.
I mean, also, I appreciate that support.
Back to Galen's color of the device. You guys have FirstNet, the township, or the PD folks? Check with them about adding a tablet for?
Yeah, I'll have to check to see what we had.
Yeah, it's good for you.
At one point, Dennis had managed that, and I think that's transferred to, but we did a lot of, when I, when I first came on board, there was a lot of phone lines, we just didn't understand where they were, where they were, who had them, so we shut a lot of those off. That was actually through Dennis.
But fine, but maybe just add, even add.
Right.
Add the tablet through them. Add the tablet with F G or whatever.
Right, that's.
Ten months, more months from the plan.
Right, I think there may be one left, and that's what I want to check in with before we get back to it.
All right, all right, so we'll look into that. Galen, right?
I'm gonna continue pursuing.
Yeah, well, I can get.
Okay. And we'll look into the device and get some information around.
Great. Appreciate it, thank you.
Sure. Here we are. Still new business? Oh, C, yes.
So, in your packets, at the last meeting, this was Supervisor Rhodes, our vice chairman, asked me to add this back into the packet. In your workshop packet, we had some information on PAMs. What has recently arisen, we, we had a billing that was two years behind. A lien was made, and after that, well, the thirty-nine letter went first. The, the owner of those EDUs came in, they paid what they owed us, and then somewhere across, that information did not get back to House of Stow. The lien was that issue, probably within a couple days of that, and that's what we believe to have happened. The individual that tracks that is in two days a week, which by the time, if you look at when the check was received, check was received after the letter was received, about seven days, took about seven days to clear. If they had then, you know, been out for a day, one of those days, it, it might have been on a week, week and a half until they actually got it. So, in the meantime, lien was made, it was corrected, but it brought up for a good conversation. You know, one of the things that's very challenging is to manage things such as our sewer program, and so Supervisor Rhodes asked me to place back on here a, a discussion on PAMs. I might add to this that one of the other things I think we ought to consider if we're going to move in that direction would also be to look to do our, our SMP program, which is the on-lot septic through that, as well as our stormwater. And I say that because at this point in time, you have essentially three different billing modules, if you will. You have your sewer system, which is not like Daja, but for us, it's quarterly, one tenth quarter. The on-lot septic is every three years, and then you also have the, the stormwater, which is, right now, the stormwater's gonna be annual, and it's gonna vary based upon where that development is. So, there's some for Quaker Ridge, and Oak, Oak Road has not come online yet, once we pull Oak Road. I'm expecting another year, year and a half before that goes.
Yeah, about a year and a go, year and a half ago, we had a meeting with him, here at the township, and he actually was willing to develop the module for the SMP, so that, you know, they would do automatically, send everybody their notices out, collect the thirty-five bucks, and, you know.
This is through PAMs? Through PAMs?
PAM, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, I, I think, you know, and, and of course, obviously, one of the things that we should discuss is, you know, those that do fall beyond it, it can be very pricey, if you've already seen that in your packet, notices, the, the penalties that are involved there, all within the construct of what, what is allowed by law. And, but I think, you know, one of the challenges again is that we have all these different mechanisms. I can tell you right now, the SMP, the SMP system, there's no module for it, either in Union Links or in PAMs. We manage that through an Excel spreadsheet. So, you can imagine that can be very challenging, you know, change in ownership, how does all that work? And it's a lot of moving parts.
It's very cumbersome and very detail oriented. It's very cumbersome and very detail oriented, it's not a lot of fun.
It is.
So, I, I asked to have this added back on, cause I'd like to have a, a discussion around, um, possibly, um, you know, making a motion to move forward with that, because I think we need to outsource those things. I think there's, um, you know, uh, mistakes and things that happen that, you know, um, it, we could totally avoid, um, for our residents and things like that.
That's great, but just remember that the companies we employ also make mistakes.
Well, and that's fine, but we can, you know.
But that's, that's easier, I think, for us to address then, from a management standpoint, than, than some of the challenges in-house, uh, when, when they come in. And, you know, like, like anybody else, you're right, uh, we're the right side, it, it, we do make mistakes here, and, and so did, so do they, but, um, again, I think this would be very helpful to us, uh, in the long run.
So, what is everybody's thoughts on it, I mean, I'd like to, to get it going sooner rather than later, at least get some details around it, move forward with it, figure out what we can.
And you just said they don't have one, which one don't they have?
Yeah, so, yeah, well, so, yeah, we don't have enough to quote, but what I wanted to do is, um, if a motion would go through, I'd like to make a motion that we do use PAMs with the stipulation that the updated quote wouldn't go over like a dollar per bill plus postage, right? So, right now, the quote's about sixty cents, I can't imagine it goes up more than forty cent a bill, right?
No, and, and by the way, they, they confirmed with us today, I, I, I worked on that and, uh, with, with our team, and, and we did confirm, the quote's not changed since what we received previously, so that, they just, they're updating it.
I think there's also a quote here for the S M P program.
I, I'll have to check at that, I did not see that.
You know, I think when he came in, I think he pretty much had that figured out, and he was ready to start with it if we were.
Okay.
So, the S M P program, Mr. Steve, first of what for the people who are not?
That, that's the people who have On Lock Septic, over three years, you're required to have it, uh, pumped, it's inspected, and the township then, you sent the township the inspection papers and the thirty five dollar thing.
And for everyone out there, that's not something that this board necessarily relishes in acting, we have some degree of, um, constraints, obligations put on us from, we'll say, above.
A- a- actually, from the municipalities, they get two hundred bucks for that. I mean, I think we're pretty inexpensive, a bunch of people, they're playing about it.
There's a neighbor one that's two hundred a year.
Yeah, that's right.
Just two hundred a year.
It's, it's not a tax, it's just that nobody had to do it.
So, I think we're, we're kinda on the ball there, but we're trying to maintain cost. But, you know, the other thing, uh, with, every time we lean somebody with, with the sewer billing, they, they get a, a one over on this because they're not billed for the late fee each time. So, you know, and this is all stuff that they'll fix, and, and we'll be catch, they'll be catching that, uh, you know. Uh, another thing that needs to be tightened up is with codes, where they allow a business to expand beyond a certain CD capacity, they require, they require to get more E D U's. I know we have some in here, they're expanding, and people are getting things all the time, and they're not getting E D U's, they're not being billed, and, uh, you know, we're getting cheated out of money.
Okay.
Well, if you do that, why aren't you telling anybody?
So, can I ask what's your thought on that, someone would do that.
If you knew that, why aren't you telling anybody?
I would like to.
Oh, I haven't changed anything.
We can change anything.
Alright, so you're looking for a motion?
Yeah, looking for a motion to outsource our billing. The, the.
Make that motion.
The sewer, the, um, S M P and the, um.
Stormwater manager.
Stormwater manager. Make that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion, move forward, hang, we have a second.
We'll do that.
We have a second, roll call, Ms. Frey has done.
Yes.
Mr. Gullup, yes. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
And although yes. Okay, uh, old business, nothing?
Uh, you do, you guys were supposed to appoint somebody to negotiate the Leeske Sewer Authority two months ago. Are we not gonna do that, or?
I think that, I think that was, um, was that done last night?
No, you appointed, uh, council.
And I am here to be the lead for the.
Alright, so.
The person.
Alright, so you can, I, I mean, that's, I don't even know that it requires a formal motion, uh, since we've appointed council for it, I mean, it simply be directed to be the liaison.
So, do we, do we need a motion to make him do the liaison, or?
I don't think a formal motion is necessary, if you want to, you can, but, uh, I don't think everything requires a motion, I think wherever he said he's got it, we know he's got it, so what's the.
Do who?
Okay.
Took me there.
Yep. Okay, nothing else for old business, um, executive session, we need an executive session.
We have one, Mr. Redding, and I have one that we just.
Okay.
It's a good news story, but we need to tell you.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we need to report on the litigation.
Okay, nothing to report, alright, we do need executives, talk about personnel litigation matters, so we'll break for executive at eight oh one. This one? Yeah, we can. You're carrying. You're welcome.
I'm really happy, you.
You can hang here, we'll meet you at my pocket, I promise.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Very nicely.
I'm sure you're back here going and making me one now on.
They're been up since fourth of March.
Brian?
Yes, sir.
Did, uh, Mitch talk to you about checking the retention basin at the bottom, uh, of Buckholler Road and the other one that runs up into Timber Ridge, is that Timber Ridge road he's got right there?
John Fisher.
Are you talking about like the Beat of Pride?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that's Timber Ridge, is it?
Yeah.
I don't think that, that's over.
Yeah, you speak the Beat of Pride right next to it.
Yeah.
It's overlook.
It's overlook.
Overlook? Overlook?
Overlook Road?
Yeah, that's overlook Road.
It should be Super Mountain Road.
Yeah.
What are you, what are you seeing?
Well, I'm wondering if the basin is, is, it's working correctly as far as water running through, cause it was raining like hell when I was there, usually, I saw that thing.
How long ago were you there?
We haven't had rain in months.
I was just gonna say, we need more township means, the only kind of precipitation we've had in the last two months is we need more township means.
Go ahead, so.
But I've heard from check, to see if the, if the structures, the drainage structure has been caught up or something, and letting water run out too fast.
Okay.
Is it really doing its job retaining water?
Okay.
And the, the other problem with it is, when they were put in there, they were made the responsibility of the lockholder.
That's right, those were.
And I know that maybe John has to check the wording that, uh, uh, what's his name, what was our attorney's name?
Chris.
Chris Martin's put in.
Okay, so, so you, you're at the bottom of overlooks, going into Quaker Hill.
Yes, going up to Quaker Hill, overlooking and Buckholler Road, sits right on the corner. And if that's not holding water back, it's gonna dump it all down Buckholler, up run.
Right down to my problem, Culver.
Yes, yes, yes.
Which, by the way, has been in with D E P for at least seventy days. And I've heard enough.
How, how was your problem with traffic light?
Well, we're getting there. That's, that's my next priority as soon as they approve payment for the streetlight that next to me, and then that comes up.
Yeah, I told Rich, I, he said he was in touch with you on it, but I.
He mentioned something, and I think that's where we left it was when it started raining again.
My thought was that something happened, if that was a galvanized pipe put in there, it could have rushed it off, it could have been removed by the property holder, so it's easier to mow or something. I, I'm not saying anything, I'm not blaming anybody, and I'm not accusing anybody.
Yep.
But if it's not doing its job properly, it's definitely causing difficulty at that call room.
Okay. Well, we've sure had our fair share of issues that.
Well, yeah, I went out there in July, it didn't rain here at all, we had nothing here, there's a localized storm up there, and I got there after the water receded, but I could see from the center of the pipe that's in there, a hundred and thirty-five feet going back toward Buckholler Road, the, the road was underwater.
Really?
Yeah.
Remember, they put those lots in.
Now, that wasn't measured.
They're so wet.
Yeah, it wasn't, wasn't measured with a micromoder, that was, you stepping it off, but.
I was surprised how many lots are on the other side of that creek.
Yeah.
And, and I, you know, it's like, how the heck are we gonna get to these things?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh.
That is so wet in there on that side.
I would say Plowville has its own weather pattern.
Something has its own weather pattern, because it hit that, and it hit whatever the name of the little creek is that runs down, uh, parallel with Route Ten, coming down from Plow Church. I never did know the name of that creek, if it has one, or it's just an unnamed tributary to the Allegheny, I don't know. But that flooded out all over the place, it flooded Golf Course Road, uh, it flooded down at five sixty-eight, where it's, it's been flooding every time you have heavy rain, flooding down there.
Okay, no, I'll put it on my list, right here for the traffic light.
Yeah, what you guys did up there to make it rain that hard, that everybody's.
Well, you know, I was surprised, you know, every year, there's a guy's yard right across from Westley Road, and every time we have a torrential downpour, he always ends up with debris in the yard. Now, everybody's been putting in bigger pipes going down through there, and he had to do the same thing, uh, just two years ago when he got really locked out. But he didn't have nothing during a torrential downpours, isn't it? Uh, well, he, uh, let's see.
How far down west?
What's that, what Dunskey's, he's over there.
Oh. Before one seventy-six?
Uh, yeah, it ran across from Wesley at, uh, Ten.
Oh, okay.
At the Jesus Saint, at the Jesus Saint point.
Yeah.
It was.
Yeah.
We didn't leave it down there.
They thanked us for taking the call.
Totally, totally. At least he can put it in his pocket. And that would have been worse.
Alright, uh, we'll come back into session, need a motion, Mr. Acting Chairman, we take the meeting.
We're, we're game now.
Take the meeting, uh, and add an emergency item. I do, need a motion to add, um.
Agenda item for a.
Agenda item, a motion. Okay, so.
It's to advertise.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion to amend the agenda to add a motion to advertise for a, a public works, uh, employee, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Yes.
Do we have a second, roll call, Ms. Frey has done.
Yes.
Mr. Gullup?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
And although yes. Alright, someone wanna make a motion that we advertise?
Make that motion.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call, Ms. Frey has done.
Yes.
Mr. Gullup?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
And although yes.
Thank you, board.
Alright, uh, we have a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn, do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Night Christopher.
Night Christopher.
Night Chris, have a great time.
Aye, yep.
Yep.
You too, dear.
Uh, we do have checks for.
Missing the big.
You're rich, they said something about driving home, you might be a rod.
Yeah. See that peasant, that good cross street drive right there? Does it? We was alive yesterday, I heard the pastor there, he's not alive.
Yes.
We're doing it until next, the vote room.
Yep.
Oh, that's very nice.
If you move over down.
Well, then that's Chris, but.
Yes, I can.
So, now, is Chris going out, or are you gonna give it to Chris going out?
Yeah, I guess, I'm trying to do first.
Whatever. They sent all the tankers here at one point, so we could see the eighteen D's, and they were screaming at us, and we were like, where would you ever do that?
Yeah.
At the tankers.
Oh.
We had to wait that one from lower else. The first night, it was Chief Kendrick, and the second one was also Chief, and then the rest of the time, it was.
Is he home?
No, that's right.
Yep.
Yep. Chief Emery was the.
There's a couple that are out of medical order, the recent medical order came in the front row, so, I think there's two, and one of those is reading the other, just so you're aware.
Straight force for parachute stuff, so he has a double. But he, he had command from eleven o'clock at night till about five o'clock, next day. They, there was some frustration because they, they, uh, they stopped calling in resources, and they did have enough resources, but C C N R made the call that they didn't have any more resources on the guard. And people that were there said that was a huge mistake, they should have adult resources, they would have probably stopped. Again, they didn't want to be on their guard, stumbling around, they brought a group from Montana, and there was a group from Montana up on Blue Mountain, Blue Mountain Fire. There's fire they were seeing one never seen, it was California style fire.
Yeah. I think it was a real one, wasn't it?
Yeah. Well, they said, uh, she.
Yes, lady two, lady two.
So, she was one of the first ones, started with this morning off of the. Redding had two engines, it was a woods fire, so, Judge's house, and he said the fire was blowing right through the water, like the water's draining.
I believe that. Which is unbelievable, I mean, we got, we got, hopefully, we got an injury.
Yeah. Well, when I saw it, I turned it out on three seventeen four, we could see the smoke from the mountain, like, we could see at the mountain, it was a lot.
How's your dramatic work?
See you later.
Yeah, we made a, because it hasn't.
That's amazing.
See you, John.
You gotta know, it's your first miss line for you, for the first time, since we're online, we have now slideshotted on the base.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to, you know, it's so hard, one's up top, one down low.
Thank you, they're worth it, they're a time, you can't really.
Wish I might have, I'll be dead event, but I wanted to tell you about, I, I just, I don't want to be a man to be, cause I'm not gonna do it.
I like your signature, that's pretty hard.
Right, and the only thing I saw.
Yeah, well, my instinct.
Uh, they should take overlay, Dodgewood Drive, they ran that holy spur, six foot.
Yep. Uh, yeah, these all.
Cause we're.
Finish here.
I also want, so we have a mark where the truck will stop, well, curb.
Yeah.
So, if it doesn't become a problem, we can go and do it.
Yeah, here, where it's about to go on or something.
I wanna, yeah.
I'll be there for that.
I'll make it nice, I mean, I'll mill it out, but yeah.
Come down there?
I was kinda curious, I wanted to see how that, I seen having heck with rain, so I couldn't see what the heck it was doing.
Well, you can see what's, what they're doing down here, the line with the ice pack, they can already hear the rail, cause it's slow. Tell me, hope it's smooth, it's big.
Yeah, right.
You've got a beautiful slutty one, it's been smooth like that.
Oh, yeah.
And raises up there.
Yeah, my mother's not showing her. Yeah, and the Sunday or next week, they're not solving it.
With me?
No.
Thanks, sir.
I can't believe that.
Below the alcohol.
You wanna help, hold that part?
Are you, you're too good to afford that, or?
Yeah. I feel anything. Well, far, it is good, I didn't smell.
By two percent, you're pouring, I mean, that.
I don't have any coin. I spend it all. It's raised by your, I haven't had that.
It's gonna take a while, so, you know, you'll get a couple minutes.
Yeah, yeah, it's so dry, there's nothing there to freeze, no moisture there.
Alright.
You guys did a good job. I know you don't hear that water, no.
We're not here then.
I fully understand, uh.
It's just basically, it's.
Did somebody quickly?
Yeah. Well, I had.
I was very bad at sports, I was very. That's a shame, cause we're coming on.
Well, we have four, cause we hired two new ones, need the others. All of them, great. Unfortunately.
It wasn't Ash, but it's slightly reactive. Yeah, it's like, you're out, and it's, it's very bad.
Yeah, we did, uh, we did some church. Site. Oh, wow.
Let's.
I just don't care.
I just don't care.
I learned a lot.
I don't know, we got that. Alright.
Take care of.
No.
No.
Okay, well, trust me, all you had to do was live with my father, if you lived with my father, you learned to stand your ground, because if you didn't, you were a wronger. That's why I don't do well with men who, who can't stand up to me at all. I'm okay with that.
This is gonna take me these two years.
What? Hey. Uh, my laptop that I have at home is, it's old X P, and I have created a text, now I took my money back on the. I still have an old X P when it works.
Yeah, they're solid machines.
Well, that's why they had to get rid of them, that's why they had to do away with that O S, wait, mine still works, it's still boot, it's still working. Do you have a grade two eleven, you know what my answer was? No, I did not agree to eleven.
It still works during.
But things we have.
It was the best one.
Yeah, but that's why they have, that's why they have, end of life, end of life. Yeah, and that's why they have, that's why they have to end the life, end the life.
Never broke.
Wow.
Oh, okay.
Never did.
Alright.
Nope, give us anything else, you know, yeah.
It's a good part. From the land at FEMA, Tom Hughes.
Okay.
Yes, I must see him.
He did the other second talk.
You didn't lose another club, you didn't.
He's ringing a bell for somebody.
He's doing a lot of, but not that you got.
Still waiting on buyers.
Yeah, I can't be here, I don't wanna.
I have a question, why don't we just leave it, is it a download?
Well, no. We have fun with that.